We'll call this special meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the free public service of our nation, our republic.
Could I ask Councilor Maronis to read our mission statement?
Thank you, Mayor. Silver City is the hub of an inclusive community settled within a small town that through guided growth honors and preserves its historical, cultural, and natural heritage while facilitating jobs, health, and education resources such that the residents and visitors may enjoy and protect the recreational opportunities of the area and high quality of life.
Thank you. The item on the agenda today is discussion on possible action on the projects for the 2011 Quality of Life Fund. We're going to start with a discussion on the financial information by Mr. Muirhead, and then I'll go to the audience to support your cause or support somebody's cause, and then we'll come back to the council. Mr. Muirhead.
Thank you, Mayor. First, Mr. Muirhead with Model Sterling Firm. We're the bond council for this financing. What I want to do is just briefly hit on the document that you have in front of you, which is called a preliminary official statement. What that is, is a offering informational item that an issuer, in this case, the town of Silver City, uses to disclose its financial and demographic and statistical information to potential purchasers of the bonds. And these are requirements under the Securities and Exchange Commission rules and regulations. The goal here is that we want to be full disclosure of all relevant material information regarding the town and regarding the pledge that you're making in terms of the gross receipts tax you're pledging and what your intended variety of projects might be. As well as not, we don't want to misstate anything material, and we don't want to fail to, we don't want to overlook something. Example might be if you were in the city of Rio Rancho, and we disclosed that Intel employs hundreds of people and is the main engine of that community, and if you, as a commissioner or council, were aware that you had been notified by Intel that they were going to close that plant in six months, but you don't want to tell anybody because it's bad news, failure to include this, information like that in this offering document or in a comparable offering document would be a violation of the SEC rules and regulations. So, as councilors and the mayor, your obligation is to review the offering document as it relates to the town and the statistical and demographic information, and Councilor Betterson has already done that exceedingly well, as I have seen her comments. And that's exactly what we're looking for, is that careful review and highlighting information that is not either completely accurate, slightly inaccurate, or incomplete. So, the, it's not the entire document that you have to do that. The majority of the document is legal covenants from the bond ordinance, which are my responsibility. The entire document is ultimately our office's responsibility. But the legal discussion, you don't have an obligation to confirm that's accurate. Discussion about the pledge revenues and the gross receipts taxes and the laws applicable to that, you are not responsible for confirming the accuracy of that information. We found out today that the town does have an A-plus rating from Standard and Poor's, which is very, very good for a community of this size, well above investment grade. So, that's something to be very proud of for the town. And that rating is based on information that's in this preliminary offering statement, as well as your audited financials and information that was provided to Standard and Poor's a couple of weeks ago during your ratings presentations and working with George K. Baum. The, again, the majority of the document is legal covenants and legal requirements, and it does mirror the bond ordinance which you adopted in September. The way this works is we take this document, the underwriter, George K. Baum, goes out into the market with this document, is reviewed, and based on the A-plus rating, the pledge of revenues, which are very strong in this case, and the legal covenants, you get purchasers for the bonds, and the interest rates are set off of, off of that rating and off of those other criteria. Once that happens, we come back, fill that in, and it's been a final official statement which is completed at that time prior to closing. In this document, as you've seen, there are, did a brief discussion of potential projects. Those are just a holder of some quality of life projects that you had identified were going to be discussed. We put those in there for purposes of identifying what might be done. The, want to stress that that's an evolving process that you're doing today, okay? In this offering document, what we will say is that the town anticipates using these bond proceeds, these five million of it, for quality of life improvements, including but not limited to some of the following. And then we'll list a variety of things as we've already done. The discussion and the decision on what projects you're going to do is entirely this process today, is entirely the democratic free flow of discussion, and you as a governing body making a policy decision how you want to use those proceeds. So, what is in this document currently is, again, part of that discussion, but is not definitive and doesn't bind you. I want to remind you real briefly, from the bond ordinance from September 16th, the project is defined very broadly in there to mean acquiring, constructing, purchasing, furnishing, and cooking, rehabilitating, beautifying, making additions to or making improvements to capital projects. That's as broad as the statute and your gross receipts tax ordinance permits. What you do within there is within your power as the governing body and as a policy decision. I'm happy to answer any questions that I have about this preliminary official statement. Again, if you could focus on the discussion of the town and the economic base, that would be the most, the most helpful. And again, Council Betterson has given me some excellent comments, and I know, Mayor, you have some comments, and we will incorporate that into the final, the final version. Happy to answer any questions. I know you want to get on to the meat of your meeting.
I just have one comment thinking here. You know, we just read the town mission statement, and it would be nice if under the town that the mission statement wasn't included.
Absolutely.
Because this is really the identity that we bring to every meeting, and I think it's really important to have that up front.
We absolutely can add that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
At what point will you make a determination that you feel that the POS is true, accurate, and?
Well, I, from the, the legal discussion and the covenant discussions, and really, we're very comfortable that that is accurate. We just want confirmation that, from you all, that the discussion of the town and the economy is accurate and complete. And we feel confident we have a very strong base. Initially, there was, I think George K. Baum was looking potentially to price these for next Tuesday's meeting, thinking that maybe, given the timing of things, that pricing may be a little later in a special meeting, but I have to talk to Mr. Valenzuela about that. But the document really is in very near final form, subject to your review and approval, and we can move with it at any time, to be honest with you. Just, it's now just a coordinated decision between you having an opportunity to look at it, Mr. Valenzuela deciding when we're going to start marketing it and pricing it, usually need about a week to market it, and then going from there.
Yeah, most of my concerns, I believe, are typos.
Yes. Yeah, you had, I went through it as well as, as Council Betterson, and I think we're finding most of those. And that's just too many times staring at it, finding how you, everything looks right, and then you look at, the worst is when you look at it five years later and realize you don't even have any idea what you were talking about. Not that that's ever happened, yeah. So, no, I feel very comfortable with the document, and your review is an extraordinarily important part of this process, just so that we all have a comfort that, that what we are telling the market is, is accurate. And as you've seen in the last three to four years, and if you follow this kind of thing, focus on municipal debt, focus on disclosure on municipal debt is a very big item now, and has always been an item, but it's really been a focus now of making sure that it is reviewed thorough, complete, and we've always held that standard, but it's really becoming more of a, of a focus of the SEC who's created a whole new office to review municipal debt and disclosure, and so this is an important step that we certainly don't want to minimize.
Well, I, I believe this document points that out.
Yeah.
Very clearly that this body is absolutely responsible for the person that you commented on, and you are responsible for, for the legal portion.
Yeah, and ultimately, we're responsible for the entire document. At the end of the day, we give an opinion on the disclosure document that, under SEC Rule 10B5, that it is accurate and complete and does not materially misstate any material information or fail or admit to state something material. So, there is our opinion that covers the entire disclosure, as well as our legal opinion that the bond issuance is, is legal and binding and that tax consumption is binding. So, those are the two primary legal opinions that you will get through this process.
Comments, questions, concerns, for Mr. Maronis?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The six projects that have been proposed are 32nd Street tennis court upgrades, Silver City golf course clubhouse, swimming pool upgrades, recreation center upgrades, facilities, parks, maintenance buildings, roof, four new baseball fields, and improvements at Scott Park. That's just for your information of when he refers to the list that's loosely placed in the document, that's what he's referring to. I am going to go to you, if you want to stand up, come to the podium, tell us who you are and what project or concern you have. Now's the time.
Mayor and councilors, my name is Mike Traheal. I am president of AmBank, and I am here to tell you that I have been playing tennis for about 50 years now. I would like the council to know that it is a lifelong sport. I think that the, the tennis courts that we have over by the high school have been in disrepair for many, many years. I think that with the obesity problem that is facing our young, our young people, that this is, affords them an opportunity to exercise and to exercise for a long time. I think that it also provides an economic impact to our community. I know that many times, the university has had the opportunity to host tennis tournaments. The university does have some tennis courts, but because of the limited numbers that they have, they have to sometimes fall back on the courts over by the high school, and that many times, teams have not been able to come here because of the lack of tennis courts. I think that our university tennis team has been ranked nationally, and I think it's a tribute to young athletes that we have here at the university. I know that our tennis team at the high school has also been able to compete at the state level, but it's been a couple of years since they've gone there. I would like to encourage the council to please consider upgrading those tennis courts. I think it's very important to this community for health reasons and for economic reasons. Thank you.
Patty Reed, I'm the sponsor of the Grant County Tennis Association, and I'd just like all those tennis players to stand up just so the council can see how many of us out there are actively playing tennis. I want to say that when those tennis courts were good, those tennis courts helped to produce students that were playing at the high school that were not only state champions, but went on to become national All-Americans. There's no way that any student could come out of those courts now. They are dangerous, as I know you know. So, I'm so grateful that you're considering that. I also want to say that the Grant County Tennis Association has written two grants to the USTA, they are, and they were funded. They are for creating tennis programs for 10 and under and middle school age kids. I'd like to say that in partnership with Western New Mexico University players, we have now to, a serious after-school tennis program with kids. We intend to keep that going. We have funded tennis rackets, nets, balls. So, it's a program that has a basis for kids of, hopefully, it will grow from the grade school and middle school to the high school, and we will start creating kids from all ages and hopefully families to start using those courts over there. I know I've met with Cindy Neely in the past, and we've talked about a wonderful, all-inclusive athletic program or recreation program for families that include the tennis courts, the swimming pool, and the track. So, there are people in the communities that are, that are looking ahead and looking to get your, your families involved in the tennis courts. So, thank you so much for considering bringing that.
Thank you. Could have brought the racket.
Thank you all, you're my racket. Well, Mayor and councilor, I'm Antonio Burgos. I'm the new head tennis coach at Western New Mexico University. I'm happy to be here, from California. So, I, I've been involved in community tennis for pretty much my entire career, and I think as far as your mission statement and providing recreational opportunities for your community, I can't think of a better way than improving your tennis courts or providing more facilities for recreation for your community as well. Tennis is a lifelong sport. You're going to get 10 and under tennis, which is right now probably the fastest growing sport in the country, and you'll have older, more advanced players like myself playing, and I'll probably play until my last day on earth. And I'm hoping that you'll really seriously consider this and see the importance of, not just for the university, not just, you know, for my sake and my players and our ability to improve tournaments and competitions and whatnot, but also just basically for the community. I think those of us that play tennis understand that it's more than an addiction, it's a passion, it's a lifestyle, and it's a healthy addiction, passion, and lifestyle. And our, our goal is really to bring it to as many people as possible, and if you ever come out to a court at Western University on Saturdays, you'll see how many kids are playing and also the instructions in three different languages, so then you're, you have a lot, huge culture, you know, you have Portuguese, French. So, there's a lot of pluses in kids playing tennis, so I hope that you'll really consider it, and thank you for this opportunity.
Okay.
I've had some discussions with the schools, and they're, they're actually willing to help out with the funding part of the project as far as drainage and some helping with a little bit of the fencing and stuff. So, they are, they do have some funds available that they're willing to put towards this project as well, to partner.
Do we still have the, the new outdoor tennis court direction? Is that still?
That's something that we, we sort of more look towards the racquetball court if we did something rather than tennis court.
Sure. Next.
Mayor, councilman, my name is Luis Alvarez. I'm the athletic director at Silver High School, and if I could just piggyback what Mr. Brown had said, we will be able to go ahead and, I can't give you a number of value as to how much money we would be able to go ahead and put in to help maintain and to keep the facility looking good. I have spoken with Mr. Poole as far as drainage issues that are, that are taking place over there as far as the water, but we would be very interested in, in working in a partnership with you guys to go ahead and help to upkeep the tennis courts. As you can see, we have a great number of people, young and old as well, that are interested in tennis, and I think it's a great facility. Also, talking with, with Western, they have done a great job as far as when we've had tennis tournaments, but with the number of schools that we have, we have to utilize our facility at the high school as well as at Western. And sometimes it, one personnel gets the, the raw end of the deal because, of course, the courts there at the high school, they're, they're in disarray and, and they need to be repaired and, and maintained. So, one year it's the poor girls that have to suffer, then the next year it's the boys, and we flip flop them. But if you could please consider renovating or working on those tennis courts, that would be greatly appreciated, and we would do our best to help maintain. Okay? Thank you.
I could just tell you that the whole list, all six items, well, except the roof, which I wasn't overly aware of and didn't get any letters about, the, the five items plus just having facilities are items that have come to me for the almost six years that I've been mayor. I've gotten letters from many of you over the last several years. The tennis courts have, have been a major generator of letters to the mayor, and just today you can realize that we actually do listen, and it did make the list. They're not prioritized, but it is number one on the list. The, um, the golf course clubhouse is the same thing. I've, I've gotten comments for my entire time here as to the, the need for that. We had looked at the time on the, the country club as to what our options were with that, and felt it was a safer investment for the town to not go that way, and so now we're pursuing a different direction. The swimming pool upgrades, many of you know that they're involved and utilize that resource. The kiddie pool had to be closed several years ago, and now it's, it's really just not safe for, for little toddlers to go utilize that resource and, and start them on the journey of, of swimming. So, we, we've always wanted to, and we continue to want to upgrade that facility, as well as the, the general maintenance. If you've been there, you know that there's some cracks and stuff on the apron that you're running around barefoot, cracks in concrete, or just no good on the feet, as well as we have to replace the liner every so often, as you do with any pool. The rec center upgrades? You know, part of that is, if you look at where it sits, it's, obviously, some of the issues are, it's not the most accessible to a lot of the community. Where, that came up in the recreation forum that I held with Dr. Shepherd at Western. We need to make sure if we're going to do upgrades that we have accessibility, that the bus is running up there, that the kids can get there, and make sure that it's a destination. We're also building an affordable housing, workforce housing subdivision right in the same neighborhood. Let's, let's make sure that they have facilities to use and that, that those facilities get, get used to the match. And the baseball field, I could tell you for, forever, since my kids were little, it has been an issue that has plagued the community with the baseball fields. We did make a several-year attempt at purchasing additional land up at Ben Altamourano so that we could consolidate the fields, and that ended three or four months ago. We were not able to come to a deal. That would have allowed us to consolidate those, and so parents that have kids of different ages aren't trying to run down to Scott Park and run up to Altamourano. We, we don't have the land up there, and we, we couldn't make a deal within the laws of this town to acquire the land. So, our next best option is to provide upgrades at the, the fields that we do have. The, if you've been out there or seen pictures of it, they, they need a lot of work, and we've lost tournaments. For those of you that, that don't know, U-triple-Say brings in dozens of teams that enter the town, and they got to have good facilities. We, we have had some discussions with a minor league team that wants to place a team here. We've got to have facilities for them, they've got to have a field available to them. If we've got, sometimes you've got two or three little league teams trying to practice on one field, that's going to bump other opportunities away. So, that's kind of where we've come from, and Alex may want to elaborate on that some more, correct anything that I've said?
No, no, I think everything that you said is, 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 is correct. Now, there's been a lot of time and effort, a lot of input that we've received on, on all of these projects, and, and that's how we came up with these recommendations, and that's, that's just what I.
And because I am on the email list, I'll elaborate on the trails, and Michelle's here, they, back there in the back. The trails issue has been an ongoing project for longer than I've been around as mayor. It's, it continues to be a priority in the town. We have committed money from almost every purchase or sale of town land to Trails and Open Space Fund. There's currently $87,000 sitting in that fund. We currently have land available that we could sell that could contribute to that land. It, it is, it's a priority, but it has a funding source, and that's why it hasn't been a, a super high priority on, in putting it to this bond. The, the other issue that we've looked at was if we're, the baseball fields in that park are down at the bottom of the trail system as designed. Well, if we can attract more people to, to utilizing the trails that get the trail from a different neighborhood that it's feasible, down to that trail, they can head down to the baseball field, and we can also design features around the baseball field that are attractive to physical exercise, walking, biking, horse playing around, just being outdoors and, and being physical. That is a huge asset that I feel will not only benefit the fields, because the more people down there, hopefully, the less vandalism we have, but having the trail system right at the, the start of it is going to benefit the trail system too. So, that's, that's been our thinking. Now, if I want to hear yours?
Mayor and councilor, my name is Gary Staley. I wear several hats here today. One is the co-chair of the Health Council for the last five or six years, and a past chief juvenile probation officer, and the grandfather of 13 grandchildren who live in this community. There are more, but not all of them live here. I don't want to devalue anything that you have proposed on your list. I didn't bring, I did bring my hiking shoes, but I didn't bring my running shoes. Mike has his old wooden, no, that's not a wooden racket, is it, Mike? He's been, I can attest that he's been playing tennis for 50 years. I would however like to open the discussion on, if not this round of bond funding, at least in the future, for the council to consider the Big Ditch as part of the trail system as fundamental infrastructure for the town. Not just recreation, but it will serve many purposes. Mr. Leibner is not here today. He chairs for the Manchester Project, a, a Big Ditch project. He's the chair of the Big Ditch Committee. I happen to be on there, and he's out of town, and I, I'm sure Michelle will speak to the General Trails and Open Space Group. But I want to specifically ask the council and, and to look to the future, as, as you look at the Big Ditch, you have right within your town limits what I would consider the jewel of the Nile with the Big Ditch. I know a lot of people are afraid to go down there now, but as that is developed, first and foremost, for the use of local community people, and then as it becomes a part of Silver City and Grant County becoming a destination, the Big Ditch has to be a very central part of that. We're riding fairly high right now economically with the mine situation, but as we know from those who, of us who have lived here for many years, that can change rather quickly. And we need to put in place and utilize what nature has given us as focal points and utilize that to be able to. that to be able to attract people to come here and visit, even if they don't stay, to come here and visit. And one of the ways that that can be done is to have a, a nice walking area where people can walk and, and enjoy the beauty of, uh, the jewel of the Nile, the big ditch. Um, I mentioned that it should be considered part of infrastructure because Silver City is not so large that people could not walk or bike ride to and fro almost anywhere in this community. Trails are actually one of the least expensive, um, pieces of infrastructure. I, I don't, don't want to get into any comparison of what trails would cost versus new swimming pools or upgrading and all that, cause you folks have probably already done that, but, uh, if not this round, we would ask that the council consider, um, at least putting aside some money so that we can look at the master planning that has already been done for that part, particularly between the bridges, um, and update those plans and get some estimates on what different parts of that project might cost. Uh, I've heard comments that, um, it might be dangerous to look at that because of, of the expense of some of that and some of that will be expensive to, to develop to where you can actually walk in a circuit down in that area or ride a bike in a circuit. Um, but I would encourage the council to, to, uh, consider that and put that on your radar screen at least for some initial funding to look at the existing master plan. There may be several. I know I've seen several plans of potential projects for that part of the park and, and having all of the trails sort of funnel into that area. And then start looking at, uh, what each piece of that was, is going to cost for future. And I know it may not be considered, you, you might say that, uh, I, I think I heard you mayor say that it has sort of its own funding source, um, perhaps so for land purchases, but I'm not sure for, um, development. So we might need, uh, to look at that and we would ask you to do so. So that's my comments and now I'll go back to work. Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, wait, just, just let me have a quick question, cause I need some clarification from Mr. Madrell. Is that right? No, you're right. And then also, um, for that, I think when you, um, first brought up this or the last time that, uh, you were here, we were talking about bonds, that the project had to be, have a life of how much of the percentage of the bond life?
So you wanna have the, we need average maturity of the bond, which is less than the full maturity, be at least eighty percent of the, uh, useful life of the, or hundred and twenty percent of the useful life of the project. So what you want is a close matching of the improvements you're doing with the, the, the payment schedule. And on that twenty years, the, the IRS looks at assumptions that you will after a ten year mark start paying it off ahead of time. And so that's why it wouldn't be a twenty year useful life. Here you're looking at like a twelve to thirteen year useful life. And so you want your capital improvements to be, uh, within a, a percentage of, of, uh, of that, uh, debt repayment.
So, um, in doing it, this is, these are actually capital improvements for our construction project. And while we're planning, I mean, we can include, um, if I understand correctly and please tell me if I'm wrong, so we can, um, look at plans for whatever it is that we're going to be doing and, and do those sorts of things, but are we able to with these bonds actually fund something that was suggested, which would be, um, looking at the existing and redoing or reexamining that existing master plans for different parts? So that would be considered-
Within a capital, within a capital project, the preliminary work, architecture, engineering, things of that nature are considered part of the capital cost.
So that within that capital project, meaning that we can't do that as a standalone, it has to be part of our project where we're actually doing something?
Uh, you know, you can, it's considered a capital improvement, what you would do is you would amortize that in your tax analysis on the front end of the bond so that it technically is paid off on the front end. And so debt repayment would match the useful life of that, of that capital project. So the capital improvement, it doesn't have to just be the mortar in the ground, I guess is the-
That's really, yeah, cause they need capital-
It's something of a long-term value of a capital nature.
Okay.
So a, uh, a study of, of the preliminary, preliminary engineering report, things of this nature could fit within a capital improvement.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I've got a question. Go ahead.
Uh, Gary?
Gary. Come on, very steady. Back to the spotlight.
Um, for the, uh, ditch project that you're talking about, the master plans have already been done, right? The cap, the capital improvements that you were talking about have to do with, um, actual infrastructure, right? Or we did, did you say that this would be for, uh, other planning?
Well, I, I think there have been several plans. I'm not sure that there's ever been any one master plan, has there Alex?
I've never seen a master plan, so I've seen very different, but it's not a master plan.
Michelle, do you know?
No.
Okay. So that, that may have to be considered, but if there is a master plan, I would think that if, if we don't know, some of us old timers here, then it might at least need to be updated and, um, to see how things match up now.
Nick. Nick.
Is, is there a plan, Nick? Cause I-
And you're not getting out of here.
I knew there wasn't a reason I didn't when I come to this meeting. Um, there is a concept, there is not a plan. And I, I, I would say more than a planning document per se, what's needed is preliminary engineering towards actual construction of the trail. There are a lot of groups that are pursuing funding for, um, for trail building work, but there's places we need to know how the trail can be built so that those groups can go out and pursue funding and the money that the town has for property acquisition can be expended. So kind of the, the piece you need to begin with is, is that engineering and whether it comes from the bond or whether through some other mechanism, I, you know, this, this is something that's coming from this committee of community folks and, and not from Main Street, but it's a project that we'd like to see accomplished sooner or later for sure.
Thanks. Cindy.
You can all come out at one time, as long as only one of you speaks at a time.
You all know me, I'm Cindy Neely. Um, thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Mayor and Councilors.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, I'll let him introduce himself and I have some comments.
I'm Barbara Mora, a physician in the community, I'm also a swimmer.
I'm Jennifer Sheridan, I'm a dental hygienist and a swimmer.
My name's Marie DeRogé and, uh, I moved to Silver City to retire because of Western and the pool. I'm an everyday swimmer. Thank you. For both physical and mental health.
Well, I just wanted to say that, um, I, I think that Silver City's been an amazing place to raise children. My children are both on the tennis team in high school and I'm an, I used to be an avid tennis player, haven't been playing in recent years, but I totally support the tennis, the rebuilding of the tennis court, cause I think that's a, you know, really important thing. And I also believe in supporting the baseball community as well because that's a totally, another sport I didn't get to delve into, but I've been to the baseball fields and watched games and thought it was a fantastic economic, uh, opportunity for Silver City. The swimming pool, um, have been an amazing gift too. However, as most people know, it's a seasonal pool and now with Western's pool being, what is it? I don't know how broken it is. I haven't been to the meetings, but I know it's pretty broken and needs to be rebuilt and I was not able to attend the, the, the brainstorming meeting they had with the town. But my thinking on it is that developing partnerships is one of the most important things we can do in this community to build a shorter quality of life for everybody. And if our only choice right now is to have a seasonal pool, I don't know what the situation is with Western, if anything's gonna proceed with that, but if we are to just have a seasonal pool, I think it's imperative that there is some way to train lifeguards prior to the seasonal pool opening. And therefore I wanna go back to that concept I brought before you years ago and I'm sure you still have it on the table somewhere, the thought about bringing in a, um, purchasing a, an inflatable cover dome to make this, uh, facility that could be used during colder months. I, I know it might be too much of an expenditure to do it year round, but perhaps, perhaps maybe just for the, the half of the winter, January through opening season and, um, the capital outlay initially would cost, be the, the highest cost to purchase the equipment, but also knowing that there would be additional costs such as, um, the daily operation at pool, which I know is subsidized, but putting a price on a quality of life item such as a swimming pool, I, I don't know if that's something that should be put on that because it not only benefits, um, us older swimmers who have time and that we use it for our mental and physical wellbeing, it is one of the easiest ways to get an obese child moving and building muscle strength and fitness because they obviously float a little better in the water. And it's not really to be funny, it's just, it's a serious thing, but that's one opportunity we can have a partnership with the school. That pool's right there by the middle school, the high school and the elementary school. We could have some recreation programs with the school PE teachers in that pool before it opening, before summer season. So just my thoughts, I wanna just put it out there to the citizen and thank you for your time.
I'm Barbara Mora and I've been a pediatrician in this community, um, for decades and, um, I like Cindy, um, agree that everything that's been said about all the facilities that we want, I want it all for this community. And, you know, speaking for, um, not just children in this community, um, but for really all the ages, that's one thing that a swimming pool provides that some of the other facilities don't, that, um, babies all the way through, people in their nineties can enjoy a swimming pool. Uh, people have had injuries and that's one of the reasons swimming is so important for me now, is I had a severe leg injury a few years ago and some of the other recreational activities I was able to do, I'm not able to now. And I've discovered a lot of other people that use the pool for the same reason. Um, other, all kinds of other health problems, if you have respiratory illness like asthma or chronic obstructive lung disease, um, a swimming pool provides, uh, very important exercise in a humid environment, which, um, you know, is much better for people with diabetes. They often like to use the pool, um, for their regular exercise. Um, and again, as a pediatrician, I've seen so many kids, um, who are obese and often in obese family and when I ask them about exercise, which is essential, you know, they will think, what exercise would you do? What's available to you? What is available to your family? Swimming is the first thing they think of. They'll say, I do like to swim. So making that available year round in our community, I just see as a really high priority. And also like Cindy, I agree, um, that it's so important that we work with Western for a partnership, so we really, as that facility is, you know, going to be rebuilt, that we really think it through so that we, um, you know, have coordination between the city and the college to get year round facility available. Thank you.
Hello. I just wanted to say that, um, when I came here with my husband eight years ago, we were looking for a small town in the southwest to live and work and we found Silver City. And one of the reasons we stayed was because there was a pool facility to swim at regularly. And I know I've met a lot of people from out of town who spend part of the year here, who train here. Um, so I think it's a very important facility and I hope you'll consider, um, upgrading or helping us out so we can have it for more of the year. Thank you.
Just to give you a little update, the, the Western pool and other athletic facilities at Western are truly a, they're a separate issue as far as finances and for that pool to be sustained and to generate the income that would require to, to pay the bond to upgrade those facilities, we would, we would really need to go out to, for a general obligation bond, which would put it on the ballot for the county to decide. Um, especially if Silver City carries the bond because the use is gonna have to be county wide. So if Silver City citizens decide to carry that load, they should have the right to decide. If we could talk the county into taking it up, then it would truly, they represent their citizens, they could, they could make a decision on the best financing. Um, and I do have a follow-up meeting with Dr. Shepherd already scheduled, so we're, we're not dropping the ideas that, that were discussed at the forum. And I think I just emailed you to tell you that.
He just gave my speech.
Sorry.
I'm Tim Lafferty, most people, you know me, I'm a tennis player and a, a swimmer and, uh, everything you only said I agree with, that we need that just as well and I congratulate you for doing, willing to spend five million dollars on recreation because of, of quality of life, that's a, a good sign that things are, we're doing well here. Uh, I was one of the instigators of the concept of going in with the college to take over kind of their recreational facilities. Uh, by the time I did that, I guess I didn't realize that it might be three years before we could get that pool operating, the way I understand the process, if we have an election a year from now for the bond issue and, and then another couple of years to get everything done. So in that time, I, I hope you'll consider rearranging things some way or other to put a, a cover over the, or the pool. Cause it really is, tennis players are addicted and, and I'm a total addict to swimming and most of these people are and we couldn't get as many here because they're in school or they work for a living, but there are a whole ton of people that swim. And I think it's really critical for the community that we get something going, uh, with our, as quick as we can and the only way to do that that I can see is to get something over the current pool and make it usable year round. Thank you.
I thought that in my case, three years, uh, three years you're getting done. If we went, well, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Alex. Uh, Mayor, Council, on the CIO bond side of it, the mayor is correct, that it would require an election, which is a, a added process to that. You could have a special election if this is the council's wishes in the, in the spring. If it passes, you could have bond proceeds in the summer. Um, it's about a ninety day process to go through the bond issue, but, but the, the kicker of course is you need to have that election to make sure you have the majority support.
I'm, I'm Johnson, a, another local pediatrician. Um, and you probably all are aware of our, uh, issue with childhood obesity in the community and obviously I've been, uh, critically involved with that over the course of the time with the HK, HD, Healthy Kids, Healthy Communities Grant, et cetera. And Mr. Thompson, Mr. Marshall, that are, are aware of what's going on. I think we have an opportunity to, to correct a, uh, problem, uh, that's community wide. We've worked with the university on the tennis court issue, um, go down, you'll see my name on one of the tennis courts there. Um, and so we are fully aware of what the university could do had they accessed the twelve functioning tennis courts. Right now we have three, maybe four functioning tennis courts in the county. If we had twelve courts, we could easily do, um, regional, et cetera, tournaments. Um, you know, high school could have tournaments, I think neither the, uh, high school or the university can really do a tournament and have groups of, of visitors from outside the town with just that three and a half functioning tennis courts. Uh, we really need the twelve to do that. Uh, if you come out any Saturday morning now this fall, you'll see the kids already out there, cause the university team is giving lessons every Saturday morning on the, the current tennis courts. You'll see these kids actively involved and- You'll see these kids actively involved in, you know, starting down a, a good road. I have nothing against swimming as a, as a sport. I've lived on a lake, I love swimming, and I think that should be some priority down, down the pipe. But I'm getting a little older now, but I still play tennis regularly, and I think that's one of those sports that you learn when you're little, and it's a lifetime sport. And we need more access to, uh, player facilities, so I appreciate the, the town's support in that area, and certainly encourage it.
I thought you were going to support, or I thought you were going to support Frisbee Golf.
Don't, well, wait, that too, but, you know, I already have access to one of those facilities.
Yeah, you do.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephanie Anasone, I'm the current girls' tennis coach for Silver High. And I hope you have made great points. And as someone who spends countless hours along with the kids out there, I can tell you that of the six courts that we currently have, we're only able to use two of them, two that we make the best of our time there, and along with the kids, they show great pride in as Silver High's tennis players. And they definitely have made use of the courts as much as we possibly can. We've held our invitationals every year for the past five years now, and we, a lot of schools have shown interest in coming down, but because of the courts, and we've only been able to host maybe about four or five schools, or welcome four, four or five schools when really we can be hosting and welcoming eight to nine teams at a time. Our, our team has won district for the past five years, even with having two courts. You know, we've run a successful program, and it can definitely be so much better. And as you can see, we have the great support of the community, and it can just be so much better. Tennis is a year-round program for all ages, starting very young to, you know, I've tried to play along with a lot of people for the rest of my life, and along with the kids. The kids have shown such great interest, and we have so many people that are involved, from parents to younger children that are interested in playing, and we're not able to give as many lessons as we want to because we don't have the, the courts available. Again, we have, the courts have, or the program has such great potential for the community and for the school, as well as Western and the high school. And it would be great to be able to provide that. I know the kids, as well as myself, are more than willing to give lessons, to give free lessons, to give as much of our, of our time as possible, and we definitely need those resources. We have a great team right now that we have started, that we've been building, and definitely with better courts, and we'd be able to just go up from there. So definitely, it'd be great to have something, something great to work with, and we definitely thank you for, for considering it.
Good afternoon, I'm Dominic Corrigan from Silver City Golf Course. I just wanted to discuss a few reasons why the clubhouse project is important to our community and the town of Silver City. Number one would be junior golf and the growth of the game. Silver City Golf Course, along with the Silver Golf Association, have a junior golf program. It's one of the best in the state, I feel. We have about a hundred kids a year that participate in this program, and when they go to this program, they actually get free golf over the summer. And that program could grow and be bigger if we had more of a classroom environment with the facility of the clubhouse, that would make it easier for us to, you know, do the golf, have a classroom, show more etiquette rules, and give them more of a reason to be out at the golf course. But right now, we just basically have a pro shop and some dirt. And so when they're done with golf, they get bored and go home. If we had a, a better place for them to, to be and hang out, then they might stick around and play some more golf. Another reason is we have Silver High, Cobre High, and Western New Mexico golf teams, all are, are their home course, the Silver City Golf Course, all of which host home golf tournaments. With restaurant facilities, they'll be able to host bigger tournaments and be able to feed and have banquet around their tournaments, which makes it a better venue for, for all those schools to have tournaments and show off what we have. Our golf course is one of the best in the state. Lots of times we have people from out of state come in and love the golf course, and they come in and say, well, where do we go eat? And I say, well, I can tell you a frozen burrito, and we go on from there. A lot of golfers, when they are close to retiring, they start traveling to the southwest because they do have great weather here. Many of them, I probably get twenty to thirty that I run into a year, and they come off the golf course and say they love the golf course, but there's just not enough facilities for them to want to move into our community. Another thing that the golf course hosts are twenty-five to thirty outings a year. Many of them are fundraisers for high school sports, athletic teams. The Hila Regional has a, a very big event. SME, which is the Southern Mining Engineers, have a very big event, and it's hard for us to facilitate the number of players that they want to have, just because they need to feed them and have awards banquet. And we may do what we have, but we could offer a better product to, to all of them, and, and hopefully we could get more outings and get more money generated for their fundraising efforts. Thank you very much.
The golf course is a public facility, city-owned. The clubhouse would be city-owned as well. The way that it leases constructed with Silver Fairway is that all of the revenue is generated from, from fees at the golf course, are put back into the golf course. So it is not a profit-making venture for the organization. It's all about maintaining that facility. So some of the, the obstacles that they faced in, in recent years or forever because of, of course, winter coming, coming, is that during the winter, there's no revenue stream coming in. This clubhouse would provide a revenue stream for the off-season to help support and maintain, keep that golf course viable. You know, the last year that the town ran the golf course, the town had to subsidize it by two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year. Now, we don't put any money into it. The, the rates, the last time that they raised was eight years ago, maybe?
I believe when I first came back in oh-six.
Oh-six?
Yeah, we did one.
So that's, that's how long ago the rates have been raised, it's been since the rates have been raised. And the reason for that is because all the money goes back into the course, into the operation, so they don't have to increase the rates to the public, creating better access to the community, because it's, it becomes more of an affordable game to more people in the community. And, you know, the one-time investment of four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that we're looking at, our return on investment would be two years if we owned and subsidized and had to run the course ourselves. So that, that's one of the reasons that, that from a town standpoint, we've looked at supporting this, this one project, and that's why I wanted to help with that a little bit.
Thank you, Congressman.
I just have a question, probably for Alex. Um, he says, the proposed clubhouse, so would that include other groups being able to rent that facility for banquet? So that would increase our revenues?
That would increase the revenue.
Okay, so that would be something that would not just be limited to people that are playing at the, at the course, but it could provide another, it's another recreational facility?
Yes, in fact, I don't know if you ever remember, the mayor talked about the, the country club that was up there. That was a private, privately-owned, membership-only facility. Going this route, it's a public facility, open to the general public. So that's, that's another added benefit of going this route.
Okay, thank you.
Is that building there going to stay there as a, as a golf course? Or the old swimming pool, is that now that, with the facilities, that were there at one time? Is that building going to stay there?
The, I...
The country club?
The country club's private, that's privately-owned. It's a private person owns it.
I'm John Crowe, and surprised I'm going to talk about plastic grass at Scott Park. And as far as I know, it's still on the table, right? If it's not on the table still, I don't want to talk about it.
No, talk about it, because I got a, I got a response for you.
Uh-oh.
I would hate to waste all my research if you didn't show up and bring this up, so you know, Chris.
Well, there's a number of issues. It reminds me of Arsenon County Park, where we got bitten years later, and so now we're looking at plastic, massive amounts of plastic to cover the ground. I also understand that one of the reasons that that was thought of was a water issue that may not be the problem now, may have been resolved. The other issue with it is the eighty percent. I've never heard of plastic grass that lasted sixteen years, which would meet the eighty percent for the bond. All right? Math is, you know, math is math, but...
Let me explain that.
Okay. So my question is, is it, in my words, after fifteen years, are we still paying for something that's garbage? That's possible because a lot of these synthetic cures last for eight or ten years. So I hear these rumbles that they're going to guarantee for fifteen, and I'm not sure that that's real, but, okay, give me your answer.
Let's have Chris respond to your eighty percent question. As, as a reference, what you can do is ladders, these capital improvements, so talk about the engineering and the mass, you may have to hammer that front end. If you wanted to do artificial grass, you might hammer like that over the middle years, and then the, the longer life on the lift, capital projects would be towards, you know, you have to hammer that towards the back. So there are ways around that. You're absolutely right, you don't want to be paying for grass.
Yeah. It's all a bunch of words, of course. Which comes first? Right? Which gets paid off, which or not? So the, the issue is that, that this is going to get the lion's share of the money. More money goes to plastic grass than any other project. So if we can actually water that lawn out there, and I had kids who played out on that ball field when it was a dump, that was disgusting, but it's no longer a dump. So anyway, but my suggestion is take some of that money and cover the pool. There's two million dollars, two million dollars to cover the ground with plastic. Could be, buy a few domes for the pool, you know, probably, I don't know. Okay. Can I rebuttal?
Yes, I do. First of all, I don't know the life of the bubble over the pool, so I can't answer that, but you may have struck your own eighty percent concern with that.
Well, you don't have to be a dome, can be a dome, you know, for less than a million.
Yeah, I've, I've heard objections to that as well, because they want it open during the summer when it's nice, but usable during the winter.
Right. Sliding doors, you don't think.
Okay. The other is, as far as labeling it the, the plastic grass issue, I did do some research, and the plastic grass issue is, one, you get credit for using cures when you go after LEED certification, and that is on several categories: water-efficient landscaping reduction, water-efficient landscaping, and construction waste management, construction waste divert, material reuse in two categories, and recycled content. One is the, the rubber infill is already, it is recycled rubber, so it's pulling tires out of the landfill currently. The second is, every piece of it and every layer of it, once it is ended its life, goes back into a secondary use for recycling. That's my answer.
Okay. As long as that section is not at its end of life, that's true, it can get cycled. But eventually, plastic ends up life-cycled. Like anything that gets recycled, it'll only be recycled so many times, and then it's the end of life. But it, it really is reminiscent of Arsenon County Park, because we don't really know what the, if the end of this, we can call it rubber from tires, but nevertheless, there's a reason that we don't need them laying around, and that's called pollution, and things that come off the tires. Also understand that a large percentage of tires are synthetic, so we can call it plastic grass and get away with it. So then we could use chemicals to keep it clean. Remember, players still spit and vomit, bleed, spill drinks. So we are talking about maintenance, and we are talking about disinfecting this thing that isn't naturally disinfected in the environment from cold and rain and whatnot. We disinfect it. And so that is a labor-intensive issue right there, and chemicals, and water. So yes, it may reduce the water, but it does create a whole series of headaches in itself, and it has an end of life, maybe not for the rubber, but for, on the ground. And either we then deal with the issue that we didn't deal with now, or we buy more plastic grass, and we keep buying more plastic grass because we're not willing to deal with whatever it takes to have it natural.
Chris?
I have a quick question for Alex about this, about the, the plastic, the twenty million dollars, it's not all grass, plastic grass. I mean, it's, it's all, it's all really done ball field with lights and stands and all the things that we have that are, it's, it's, it's not, the bulk of the money is not necessarily going towards purchasing synthetic cures.
No, it's, the entire complex is not just a piece of plastic grass, it's a system.
It's also, the preliminary designs that, that I look at as far as where we could go, is the movable fencing, because it allows us to establish more soccer fields, as well that we can dual-purpose baseball fields over the soccer fields, and we do that, it takes an hour to set up the baseball field, if it's skylane or soccer field configuration, all the fencing is movable, you hook it up to the, whatever little tractor you have out there, and you drag it out there, and you plant it in the ground, and it's, it's, it takes somebody an hour to set up a baseball field, the mounds are movable. So we actually have an opportunity, it says baseball fields on our, we have an opportunity to increase our, our soccer fields as well at the same time. And the others, the mounds cost money, the dugouts cost money, the, the parking lots cost money. So there's, there's a whole lot of items going into the list to create the, the total, not to mention all the, the dirt work that has to be done.
I, I just want to mention something. When we did our estimate for the baseball fields up at the sports complex, which originally we were looking at, at last, I believe the, you know, how much, what was the...
uh, I believe the, Phil, how mu- what was the estimate? For the whole thing? And the dirt work was, it was half of it? Yeah, it was six point five million dollars, and, and just the dirt work was three, almost three million dollars.
For, for real grass?
For real grass.
And that's just the actual construction there, but not necessarily the maintenance of grass? Okay, um, thanks. I, I just wanna make a comment about swimming pool. Um, I actually, um, learned how to float when I was nine months old, because my grandparents had swimming pool in their backyard in California. I've been, uh, was an avid swimmer through high school. Um, I was on the swim team and everything else like that, and I taught kids how to swim. That was one of the volunteer things I used to do, um, in high school when I lived in Long Beach, California. So, um, you know, I think it would be wonderful to have, um, a dome and things like that, or a swimming pool. It's just, once again, I'll ask the question about, you know, what is the length of a dome under the harsh southwest sun? It's different. In California, most of the, uh, notorious that I swim in, and the thing that we went to for, um, viewing of tournaments and actually being part of this, um, swimming meets, um, had, had roofs, but then they were glass structures with scans, so that you could actually feel like you were outside while you were inside. And so, that's something to consider at some point amongst all of you, that it doesn't have to be something that's retractable, but something that has that ability to feel inside and outside. Um, like I said, I grew up Southern California, um, the, at least part of my life, and then, uh, when we were growing up in Missouri, we had an outdoor swimming pool where I also learned to, to do, most of the, less was continued, but that was only during the summer months. It also closed, it was run, it was, it was open air facility. So, there's positives and minuses to both, but, but I think in the future, if I consider, at least I would be willing to, as a councilman, would consider somewhere down the line, thinking of something that was a little bit more, um, um, easier for the town to take care of, and that would have a longer life, um, because, you know, sometimes, you know, you kinda, even in the summer when it's really hot, you'd like to be inside in some respects as well. So, it, it, it also, just as a member of a swim team, and I know that some of you probably were as well nearby, that, um, I prefer to be inside, um, because, uh, somewhere, less distractions and, um, earth's not, you know, flying by and dropping something on you as you're opening your mouth to breathe. That has happened, so, um, it, it happened to me, so, yeah.
Al and Doris and Las Creces both have domes, and they are only up during the winter months when the sunlight is not so intense. So, I don't know how long theirs have lasted, but I'd be willing to call somebody and find out. Um, and where I grew up in the Midwest, they put a dome over our pool, and we had sub-zero temperatures, and we swam in it in the winter, and then they took it out in the summertime, and we liked swimming outside because we were kids, you know, just like that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gail Stanford. I'm thrilled to hear, um, recreational opportunities, buying for the money, it's great to hear that, as opposed to roads or swimming or sewers, so, I'm very happy about the whole process. I did wanna ask, um, the administration of the council, what happened to the concerns about methane leakage at the new ball fields?
That is a concern. That's why we.
It was awarded, not, at the last council meeting, uh, due to the methane concerns at the, the landfill. We're, uh, putting in additional, um, drainage venting, ad- additional venting around the, the, uh, the drainage facility that is, um, uh, there for the golf course, and, um, so it, it still is an issue.
Mm-hmm, but, um, the state environmental department will be involved in this process? They have to be.
Very much involved.
And they think it's possible to?
Well, they, they actually like the idea.
Oh, okay, great, great, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor, council.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion for a short break.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second for a short break. Oh, darn, we'll get to you, Henry, it won't be long. We have a motion second for a short break, all of the favors taken, everything, I.
All right.
See you both. Motion carries, we're in ready.
I always try whatever and I just put them together.
And again, people have had my name before.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they have my name. Neither. But, uh, yeah. Well, this came with a black court, which you must be on one end of.
I'm hopeful, man. I did everything the hard way. Yeah.
So, it does appear that I don't, I really think it ought to. But I'm down to forty-eight percent. We need to make something for that. I just, I might open up right. I thought you owe me more than I have to pay.
The guy, the guy, no, no. Yeah, I owe him shit, you know, I tried to tell him, I only did is, uh, you know, like, I, I swear, I'm going to get the, um, in high school. It was primarily because they were college women. I swear in the next few, in, I, I hate it.
I should, I mean, you know, according to Sunday, according to Sunday, I should yell them out there. I can tell you that. So it may not be my doing as a friend.
Yeah, I agree. Getting the Jesus, you know.
At first, yesterday was my official way into it, and I loved them one time. First, my ability to walk on water makes me comfortable.
You have to get those waters.
My only thing else, uh, I'm actually slowly losing weight and breaking.
You're losing what?
Losing weight and breaking.
Yeah. You say that happened.
Oh, yeah, that's, oh, that's a lot of things that happens to girls.
Yeah, of course, it's been really bad.
It is, so.
All right.
Are you ready?
I'm ready. Well, I should tell you that's a problem.
Somebody who is ready to go.
They know your own. They know your own.
Does anyone have the red cap?
No, don't worry. Don't worry.
I don't think, when you're working or anything.
Um, that's the, well, probably. There's never gotten sick before, trying on things, the law, I don't want to get you in a hurry.
Where do you get more now?
We wait.
We'll call this meeting of the town council back to order, and Mr. Room, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Uh, I'm Mr. Swimmer, and just one thing I wanted to point out is the fact that although the other facilities do need upgrading, as everybody stated, they do have usable facilities. As the situation stands now, it looks like for the next three or four years, we're only going to have a pool for about two and a half months a year. And I, for one, don't think that's acceptable. Um, I would really like for you all to consider some form of cover for the pool so we can use it year round. If not that, at the very least, it could be open for a minimum of six months a year without a cover of any kind. Uh, granted, it's going to cost a little bit more to heat it during the colder months, uh, you know, when it's not dead, dead summer. But I think that, uh, that would be a lot better use of the facility that we're getting now. And so I, I would appreciate if you consider that. Let's go. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Nancy Cliff. I have, um, I have a statement, and I always have to read my statement because otherwise I won't remember what I wanted to say. Um, working backwards from ideal outcomes, working backwards, how will the specified projects perform? In other words, if the desired results are, for instance, the reduction of childhood obesity, instilling lifelong health and fitness habits, encouraging family-oriented activities, and impressing visitors with our forward-thinking attitudes? Then how do the quality of life amenities, also known as recreational resources you've identified, measure up? For example, I've done a rough estimate on the number of baseball fields currently in youth, including those on Thirty Second, which I think are four, the Town Memorial Park is three, W N M U has a wonderful field, Santa Clara has a field, and Verde has four. I've come up with thirteen. So, how is it determined that there is an unmet need for additional baseball fields? The two thousand and four comprehensive plan has only two minor mentions of the Scott Park baseball field. How do radically upgraded baseball fields meet the above-mentioned health and fitness goals? And I wondered if this was a priority because there's a demand for more playing fields or because of the need to cap the old landfill? And the funds to be used for the baseball project represent about half the bond revenue. In fact, the cost for the new baseball field complex has been variously quoted as five and a half million, that was in the infrastructure capital improvement plan, the most recent one. Uh, three and a half million that was quoted by Mr. Brown at one point, and now it's two and a half million. So how does one account for those big changes in cost? Um, it's kind of interesting because the new golf course has always been four hundred and fifty thousand. I like that consistency. Um, without a complete itemization of costs, there's no way of knowing what part of the total is devoted to methane remediation at Scott Park and what part relates to improving the field. In fact, it would be good to see a detailed breakdown for all of the expenditures you're proposing. I question whether the, uh, Scott Park, Scott Park expenditure is wise or necessary. Wouldn't it be more prudent to spend the money on a greater number of less costly quality-of-life capital improvements? How can you justify spending that much money on one extravagant project with a very narrow demographic appeal? I must say, Mayor, that since you talked about soccer, I'm feeling a little more favorably disposed. I think soccer is a much more active and, uh, healthy activity. Um, you mentioned that some people were complaining about the park's maintenance building re-roofing. And my husband and I had a debate about this, whether it was really a quality-of-life improvement. He's an engineer, he, he looks at things in a very pragmatic sense. He says, "Well, the equipment needed to maintain parks, um, has to be protected." And I say that it's purely an infrastructure correction, not an amenity that would attract new residents and visitors. I mean, they're not going to get too excited about the new roof. And it's a quarter of a million dollar expense, which I would recommend finding a new score school. And I would suggest several different priorities for the proceeds from the revenue bonds and the discussion. They might go to acquiring land for trail connectivity, already mentioned, securing the means to swim year round, already mentioned, waterworks, building stabilization, I'm not talking about preservation, I'm talking about stabilizing the building. And public library upgrades, which somehow has disappeared from the radar completely, and we still have those lending metal forward requests monies. Now, these are on your list unless you, uh, include repairs and upgrades to swimming pool, which contemplating a bubble. However, they have been on the infrastructure capital improvement plan for a number of years. Both quality-of-life amenities I propose have important common denominator. They have long-term value, they're more cost-effective on baseball fields, they promote educational and fitness multi-generational activities, they do not require vehicular access at distance from the town center, they strongly correlate to prior town planning, and they enhance existing assets. I want Silver City to reflect a sense of coherence and balance. The improvements these revenue bond proceeds will purchase should be integrated with regional as well as local needs. The public will thus be served with improvements to recreational resources which are long-lived and broadly relevant. Thanks.
My name is Joyce Newman, and I'm here to ask for a little bit of clarification, explanation, um. We're here, you're listening to public input, where do we go from here? What are the steps? Is this the only public hearing? Um, I'd, I'd appreciate a little bit more explanation about process. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Tina? Okay. To, to answer directly the, the process issue, this may or may not be the last meeting that we have to discuss the projects. It's up to the council. I would like to see us hit to an end rather quickly. Um, so that's, that's going to be determined very soon. The, the financing is, is obviously on its track, but as Mr. Mayor had explained, the projects, we can, we can continue to tweak. The, one of the items that, um, Nancy Cliff brought up was the, now I forgot who it was, Nancy. Well, I forgot about it. The public library, for one, if I change subject, maybe I'll remember where I was thinking before. The public library, the, the town has been working with the foundation, who is the caretaker of the fund, to start extending those funds on improvements to the library. So that is moving forward, and it's, because it's not a hot topic on the council agenda, doesn't mean that there's no action on it.
There's been a lot going on there.
Yep.
Right now, they're very close to finishing some designs on the, we were close to having a roof designed there, but then somebody came in and wanted to change it. So we restarted, and then, uh, we're, we're, we're close to having a solution to the roofing and HVAC system, as well as, um, at the same time, getting some, uh, upgrade design work within, within the building while they're doing the same construction. So we're, we're very close to having that work, uh, ready to come to, to council for, for building construction.
The, the item that I forgot was the itemization on the project list. And we, we have some engineers' estimates and, and some engineers' breakdowns currently that are available to you. We won't know for sure what the breakdowns are until the contracts are, are left. That's, that's how it works. But we, we do have estimates, and we, we all have them in front of us. Councilor Edison, for you.
Oh, I was just gonna, um, thank you, Mayor, I was just gonna say, I sit on the, on the council representative's library board, and, um, they've been, the foundation has been moving forward. And I know that one of the sections they plan on redoing is the children's area, and I think they actually received a donation from a service club, from the Optimist Club, is that correct? I think.
I don't know if it was them or the clients.
I can't remember which one it was.
It was the Optimist, it was twenty thousand dollars.
So that, that will also go towards the, the children's area, um, in the library to encourage, um, learning and make it a really nice environment. That's been a priority of the, of the, the foundation and of the library board in terms of wanting to really, uh, ensure that that area is welcoming to children and to their families so that they can read together at the library. And I know the staff is very much behind that as well. I think that there's some other, um, items.
So, um, I think there's an outdoor area that they wanted to set.
Yes, yes.
There's, there's a few other things.
So I think that the top of the list is the roof and the HVAC system, which is thoroughly needed, so is the bomb. And, uh, the lending moral forward monies will be used for that, um, with any other donations from other entities, including the Optimist Club for all of those sorts of things that are going on. Um, I just wanted to mention that, uh, you keep bringing up, because I'm a Cardinals fan, I'm during the race for the, sorry, just being born in St. Louis. So baseball is also a lot of money. Well, no, but baseball's a lot of money as well, it's also an activity that's, that encourages physical fitness. And there's actually a lot of learning that goes on because there's, uh, there's a lot of information you have to know, links for scoring. I used to do that for us in the softball, through to how you do certain things, and also just sort of, uh, in terms of teamwork. I just wanted to mention that, you hear these guys laughing back here, so I'm not sure what I said, that's, that's gotta make you feel a little bit, I mean, no, I think, okay, I didn't look at whatever you were doing, are you making faces?
Not this time.
Um, there's existing baseball fields out there, I think, um, that, uh, we've already discussed the fact that they're in horrible condition. Um, and, uh, at the last council meeting, I think you've already been mentioned by Mr. Brown, that we, um, have already, um, uh, lent money for methane.
We rewarded the, we rewarded for the, the methane, which is going to bring, bring us into compliance. And the reason that they like the, the baseball field issues is it actually protects and, and helps eliminate the, the wiring and, and protects the cap.
Okay.
On the, on the old mantle itself.
So the monies that are in here are not to be used for methane, um, abatement. So I, I think that we just want to verify that as well. Um, and I, I, you know, people have asked me about the roof as well, and I'm not sure where else we're going to get monies, but we do have to make sure that all those parks, parks that work for us have an environment that they can, you know.
It, it's either that or, or abandon the, the building.
The building, so it increases the use life of that building by having a new roof. Okay, thank you. I'm finished, thank you.
Any other comments, Councilor?
Mr. Mayor, just, uh, some broad comments on, on all of these. You know, I, I look at this as a, as a great start. Um, I, I fear that there's like this, that there's this sense that once we do this, then we turn our back on all recreation and, and we'll never be looking at, uh, any more projects or doing anything in the future. Um, we, we have to start somewhere, and, and this is just a, a great place to do it. We're, 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 um, hitting a, a number of needs, uh, the tennis courts have great needs. Um, now, I, I would love to see more courts in our future, I, I think we need more than the, the six. And, uh, I would like to see more and, and have that facility be used, uh, year, uh, year round, um, a little more effectively. But we need to start somewhere, we need to just get what we have, uh, usable. Um, the, the swimming pool also, I, I'm, I'm a big fan of, of seeing that, uh, facility be used year round. Um, my, my girls love, love to go swimming and, and, um, would, would great, they would definitely be, uh, a, a user of a, of a year-round pool. But we, we need to fix what we have there, we, we, we need to get it, uh, first usable in its, in its, uh, in its capacity now, and then, and I would like to see us look forward in, in the near future, um, for some future upgrades. Um, the, the baseball fields, one of the things, we say baseball fields, I, I actually like to look at it as more of a multipurpose, uh, improvement. Uh, as the mayor mentioned, uh, we, we could utilize it for, for soccer fields or any other sport, but I, I like, uh, the idea of soccer. I, I've, um, I participated in Grand County Youth Soccer Organization from the very first day it, it started thirty-one years ago. And, uh, even today, I'm, I'm a, a soccer rest. And one of the things I see is we don't have enough soccer fields, we're always competing with, uh, Silver High, and, uh, oftentimes are rescheduling or canceling games and, 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 uh, struggling to, uh, get, uh, practice facilities for, for the soccer players. This is an opportunity for, for that organization. From the baseball, I, I played Little League baseball here, you know, it's, it's hard to be reared in, in Grand County and not play baseball. Um, at the time, all we had was Scott Park, we didn't have Ben Altamano Field. And at that time, when it was just Scott Park, we did not have enough fields. I was, uh, uh, to practice, I remember we were practicing on the, the gravel lots where, uh, the Long John Silver's is now. And, and when we, and when somebody else was using that, we were practicing in the gravel yard that was, uh, right there by the, um, uh, the Holy Body of School, which is now grass, but at the time it was half concrete, half gravel, that's where we practiced. And now, with the Scott Park not being, uh, is, is usable, now we have Ben Altamano, but that's only the same number of fields as we had at Scott Park, which was not enough then, and it's not enough now. Um, so, so we definitely have that need to, to, uh, to make sure that not only do we have enough fields to play on, but we have enough fields to practice on, and we have enough fields for the other sports, for the Paraguayan football, for the, uh, for the, uh, youth soccer leagues. And, and the fact that this is a multipurpose field, it's, it's, that's a much better way for, for, it's much more palatable for me to look at it as a major part of this, uh, this proposal. And I, I find myself, uh, really enjoying and liking this, this package as a start to us promoting recreation and, and helping our infrastructure. And look forward to, uh, our work in the future, um, also advancing these projects and these needs. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Councilor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, back to what Mr. Modest said about baseball fields, we need them. And also, we can have more tournaments to come down here, more soccer teams to come down here, more softball teams to come down here, maybe even some hardball teams to come down here. Getting back to the golf course, maybe we can have an, an, a tournament, more tournaments, make money for the city. And maybe we don't have to spend so much money or ask for so many bond issues to support something else. So I agree with Mr. Modest, I agree with, with this right here, let's start somewhere. We have to spend a little bit of money to make some money. And granted, there are a lot of kids that do different things, but let's give it a start somewhere. Thank you.
Thanks. Those are those.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think this is a good start. Um, so one thing is, uh, and I was glad to see, uh, Jerry Steely come up and talk, because, uh, his, his thinking and shaped minds so much. Um, and, um, discussions with him, uh, I've, I've noticed that, uh, a lot of the things- shaped minds so much, and discussions with him, I've noticed that a lot of the things that are listed have to do with structured, organized sports. And I've played a lot of structured, organized sports in college, in high school, I have deep appreciation for them. However, there's also a need for unstructured parks and unstructured sorts of environments that are recreational. And the reason for that is, is because my primary concern is for generational patterns that end up costing us a lot of money. Working with Gary, I saw tons of kids that were not wealthy enough to play baseball. I saw, I've seen a lot of kids who, being here long enough now, I've seen children who are six, seven, eight years old who should have made it, they're nice kids, and they're falling through the cracks now that they're in the high school. And so, and we look at a regular budget, in a regular budget, the biggest expenditure is public safety. And so, if we are interested in addressing the big issues of obesity and diabetes, incarceration, those sorts of things, then we have to figure out what's the most efficient way to get those families that are involved with generational problems, and we know this statistically, I've said this a million times, you have a fifty percent chance of going to jail if one of your parents is in jail right now. And we can identify those kids early, and we know that the only way that we're going to put them on a different trajectory is when they knock elbows with a kid whose family isn't participating in that sort of thing. And there's plenty of evidence that shows what sorts of environments help change those patterns. And while structured, organized sports are one way, and it's a really good way, it may not be the most efficient. And so, in addition to this, I would like to see some, perhaps, some thinking on how we change those trajectories. That's the only thing I really care about up here, are those kids. And I don't see in a lot of these lists that, there are special interests that are very concerned about their particular thing. I think we need to start thinking about the kids who don't have resources. They don't have the resources to get out to fields, they don't have, I mean, I've been interacting with these kids, and it breaks my heart. And I think having an amount of money that can realistically work towards solving those problems, I think, is something we should be working on, and that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson, I'm going to pose this question to you, because you just kind of stepped in it here.
Who said you? Often.
How much money has the town spent in the last ten years on trails and open space?
I don't, how much has it spent, well, I mean, are you talking about Boston Hill? I mean, we didn't spend that much. And if you look at what the cost effectiveness of the trails and open spaces are, it's unbelievable. And you look at other communities, and I guess I didn't answer your question, I have no idea what it is. Alex?
We just bought the hill, it was four hundred and fifty thousand.
The town didn't buy Boston Hill, did it? It was the grant from.
It was lending money forward, but.
Yeah.
It was just like this, it came through our books, like the library.
Yeah.
The town fund. So, probably the, because that money for Boston Hill could have been used on any recreational purpose, not just trails.
I don't mean to start a war and sit back and watch this happen, but you're kind of making my point. As we discuss special interests, there's special interests all over. I was up at La Capilla one day, and this guy, after the Y C C has gone through and put in those great brick pavers and made it a path that actually I can walk on with my bare feet, this guy's up there complaining because he likes to walk on this. So, I asked him to cross the street to Boston Hill and get after it. So, we have to make these decisions, that how do you address the special interest versus just having open space? I mean, I've watched communities around this country that when they've made commitments to open space, they, the entire community has had an evolution and change, their population, their income levels, their homes, their crime rates. So, it is very important, and I personally believe that the town has given that portion due diligence over the last ten years. We've spent, I would imagine, close to a million dollars on the open space issues. Are we done with it? Absolutely not. We have, you know, if we really want to find some funds, we've got forty acres sitting out that's three miles outside of town.
And a hundred and twenty acres, a little farther than that.
So, there's a hundred and sixty acres sitting out in the forest that is owned by the town of Silver City that we're never going to develop. Well, let's sell it to somebody that wants to pay a market value for it, and reinvest that money into something that the town needs. That's just another source. We've typically committed ten percent or so of our property sales to the Trails and Open Space Fund. Well, I'd be fine if we just sold that land and reallocated the entire cost over to that fund, and the Trails and Open Space Fund. I wouldn't object to that, it's repurposing the money for the, or it's reallocating for the same purpose. So, I just, I think what we've run into is, over many, many years, we have watched a lot of our assets deteriorate. And tennis courts, I mean, we've all seen them. The swimming pool, we've done quite a bit of work on that, we've definitely increased its appeal. The baseball fields, if you've lived here twenty years, you've seen how they've gone down. At the same time, the Altamano got built and gets maintained, however, using exorbitant amounts of water. The other issue that we're faced with is the state is cutting our capital. We used to be able to send all of our money to Santa Fe all year long, and then we'd go up there and beg for as much back as we could and bring back a capital pot to address our local issues. The state has made it very clear that they want local issues to be dealt with at the local level. This sets us on a plan that we can actually start addressing everybody's concerns in a planned format over many, many years to come, with additional bond issues, with, as these get paid down, you redevelop projects and priorities, and you reissue debt to cover those. It allows us to make a commitment for the long term, that we're in control of our finances, we're in control of what the destiny is for whatever the project may be in the town, and start addressing those at the right place, which is the council, with, obviously with all of your input. So, I strongly support following this list. I think the list has been, for one, I've gotten emails on everything but the roof for six years, that it's a priority by groups of citizens. I would, I'd like to see us resolve these issues and make sure that we are addressing the needs of the citizens of the town as they've expressed to us.
Okay.
Counselor.
I'd like to, I'm not like to, I am going to move that we approve the list as presented for the recreational projects, for the bonds that we are going seeking. I think that this list is, I think as Counselor Rose said, it's a beginning, it doesn't solve everything, but it at least starts us somewhere, we can continue to expand on it and continue to look at other sources of funding, some of the ideas that have been brought forward. But we really do need to move forward on these items so that we can get our kids, so we can get our folks and everybody back out using these facilities and then also using anything that's there in the, that's available. So, my motion is to move that we approve this list as presented.
There's a motion to approve the list as presented, is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Morris.
I support that, this list and that motion, and just would like to further reiterate that this is not the end game, this is, there are some very important issues that we need to look forward into the future, and I do believe trails are a huge part of that, and as Mr. Staley was talking about, the big-ditch infrastructure improvement, that is fundamental to our town's trail system and tourism and the community at large, and we need to keep those in mind, but outside of that, I fully support this list for this start.
Any other comments? Just for the record, the list is, as I read at the beginning of the meeting, Thirty Second Street tennis court upgrade, Silver City Golf Course clubhouse, swimming pool upgrade, recreation center upgrade, facilities, park maintenance, building roof, and four new baseball fields and improvements at Scott Park. There's a motion at second now for their discussion. All those in favor, signify everything, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move to adjourn.
She was second? There's a motion at second to adjourn. All those in favor, signify everything, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.